Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Arvada City Council Meeting for April 16th, 2018. Call the meeting to order and call on Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Good evening. Would you please join me with a moment of silent reflection? And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Kristin Rush, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Williams, Mayor Proton Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Okay, Mr. Pfeifer.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to excuse Mayor Williams and Councilmember Jones from this evening.
Okay, all votes have been cast. There are five yeses and zero nos, so Councilmember Jones and Mayor Mark Williams are excused. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the April 2nd, 2018 council meeting, and I'll note that there was this, an updated set of minutes published both publicly on the website and that we have in front of us today. Do I have any corrections, additions to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will adopt those as presented. Next up, we have petitions, recognitions, and communications, and I will call on Councilmember Dot Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is my pleasure to recognize the Jefferson Center. The Jefferson Center is a not-for-profit community health center serving Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin Counties since 1958. Its mission is to promote mental health and provide quality mental health services for persons with emotional problems and/or serious mental illness. Council wishes to congratulate Jefferson Center for 60 years of service to our community. The Carriet Hall and Will Walliser from the Jefferson Center are here to accept the proclamation. I want to read that proclamation to you, and then I'll bring it down, come on up to, so we can all see you. So this certificate of recognition reads, "Whereas Jefferson Center is celebrating 60 years of service to the communities of Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin Counties, whereas Jefferson Center's mission is to inspire hope, improve lives, and strengthen community by providing mental health, substance use, and related solutions for individuals and families, and whereas Jefferson Center is a nonprofit, community-focused, mental health care and substance use services provider, they offer hope and support to individuals and families who are struggling with mental health issues and substance use disorders; and whereas Jefferson Center staff are experts in treating people with serious mental illness and substance use disorders, and offer specialized programs for veterans, children, and families, victims of trauma, and seniors; and whereas Jefferson Center is a cornerstone in our community and collaborates closely with other nonprofits, community agencies, healthcare providers, the city of Arvada, and law enforcement to improve the lives of our citizens; and whereas Jefferson Center is an essential first responder in our community, providing critical support in the event of traumatic community disasters, and is an essential resource for healing individual and community trauma. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, recognize Jefferson Center's 60th anniversary and recognize Jefferson Center for the significant impact the organization has made and continues to make in Arvada. Presented the 16th day of April, 2018, and is signed by the mayor and members of council."
So Will and I would both like to say just a few words. On behalf of the board, the staff, the clients, Jefferson Center, why thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for recognizing the 60 years that Jefferson Center has served our community as the nonprofit community mental health center that's focused on the behavioral health care of our community. Last year, we touched the lives of over 32,000 people, and we are proud of that. Mental health issues affect us all, and one in five people during their lifetime in our own communities throughout the world will experience a mental health or a substance use problem. I'm going to go off-script and tell you all two things that I'm guessing you don't know about Jefferson Center for Mental Health. One of them is that a full one-half of our executive team lives in Arvada, and a lot of our staff, too. And the other one is that way back in the '70s, Jefferson Center's office in Arvada was in the second floor of the McAvoy House. Did any of you know either of those things? Anyhow, those are kind of cool facts that I thought I would share. So I'm going to let Will have a few words as well, and again, thank you all very, very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Thank you, City Council. You know, Dr. Hall is a little modest in her words in the fact that she forgot to mention one of our greatest achievements that we've done within this past year that we couldn't have done without the help of the city of Arvada and other localities, in the fact that we took over from Arapahoe House the substance abuse services in Wheat Ridge, turned it into our crisis and recovery center, and we have just moved this past week our crisis access team over there. So we are available 24 hours, seven days a week, crisis center for anybody in our community that needs services. Like the person struggling with heroin addiction is there and can come there. We are there for the mother who is desperately searching for help for her child who is talking about suicide. We are there when the community experiences a tragedy in the workplace or elsewhere that needs support for getting through the crisis, whether it's Jessica Ridgeway situation or the shootings down at Columbine, we are there. It is a very important part of our mission to make sure we are able to recognize and understand when someone or some group of people is in crisis and knows where to turn for help. That is why we have started our Mental Health First Aid Community Trainings, and we have one once a month, and they are free. Underline the word "free," folks. Not much in society is free anymore. And we would love for all of you to take the training and join the growing network of mental health first aiders in Jefferson County. Please don't hesitate to contact us for more information. And in this challenging healthcare environment, we rely on the support of our community and your support. We truly value the support of the city of Arvada, and thank you again for recognizing Jefferson Center for Mental Health.
I want to say a special thank you to Jefferson Center for Mental Health, particularly for all you do, but taking on the detox facility of Arapahoe House. You know, we in the city are so fortunate to have the nonprofit communities that we have that make our whole community better, and there's probably no better example of that than Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So, thank you so much, and thanks for the good work. Okay, next, we have a rare treat tonight. We have one of the giants of city government with us here tonight, who is retiring next month. We have been so privileged to have him on our staff for the many years we've had, and we have a presentation of a CCCMA Lifetime Achievement Award to Deputy City Manager Bill Ray, and I would like to call up our previous city manager, Craig Koshen, up to the podium to say a few words and make a presentation to Bill Ray.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I know you said a few words. It will not be a few words. I'm going to ask your indulgence for a few more words. Good evening, members of council. I'm here tonight representing President Ron Blank for the Colorado City and County Managers Association and its board, as well as its president-elect, Mr. Mark Devon, your present city manager who will take over next year. And I want to also introduce our executive director, Denise Taylor, for the City Managers Association. It's my personal, special honor tonight to present to Mr. William Ray Jr., known to his family as Bill, the rest of us as the quintessential deadhead. I want to recognize Bill tonight for his award of, his receipt of, the Lifetime Achievement Award for the Colorado City and County Managers Association this week. And that, or this year. And that is an extraordinary honor, because for those of you who know Arvada well and the Chamber, there's, the Chamber gives out a pioneer award every year, sorry, they give out a pioneer award, but it's not compulsory that it be handed out every year. Only if they feel that there's somebody special who they want to recognize does the Chamber issue the pioneer award. And the same is true for the Lifetime Achievement Award of the Colorado City and County Managers Association. Those who know Bill Ray describe him as a mentor, a lifelong learner, a passionate leader, and as I mentioned, the quintessential deadhead. Bill's contributions to the communities he has served are extraordinary and noteworthy. City management has been at the heart of Bill's persona, and he has been a leader amongst Colorado's municipal managers for 40 years. So let me detail a little bit of this. It won't explain a lifetime of professional work, but it touches on some of the highlights. He has served in communities from 1,000 to over 100,000. He served with the San Luis Valley Council of Governments, and there he helped to launch a mushroom farm, not that kind of mushroom, developed a keen understanding of regional planning and intergovernmental collaboration which prepared him to accept huge challenges, no matter the size of the organization he was managing at the time. Bill accepted the challenge of becoming the first town manager of Pagosa Springs in 1980 and served there for three years. He moved on to become the Economic Development Director for the Southern Ute Tribe from '83 to '84. His next position was with the town of Grand Lake, where he served for eight years. Bill was a founding member of an economic development group governed through an intergovernmental agreement that completed the redevelopment of the downtown area. Those who know Grand Lake well will recognize his work. And actively protected water resources through a separate regional initiative. He served the town of Cortez from 1992 to 1999. Bill there helped form leadership Montezuma for Montezuma County, tripling and tripled the size of the Cortez Park System, and created a partnership to generate more affordable housing. He served for, as interim manager for Mancos, helping to address the needs of a divisive and conflicted community while the city council was in the process of selecting a permanent manager. We hired Bill here in the 2000 as our Public Works Director, and he served in that position for five years before becoming the deputy city manager in 2005. As you know, Bill presently oversees the operation of police, parks, information technology, and the utilities department, in addition to being a highly valued, I'm told, and well-respected, I'm told, and it wasn't you that told me, okay, and absolutely essential member of Arvada's leadership team. Bill assumed the mantle of leadership while performing his duties as Arvada deputy, and he will mark 10 years as the interim executive director of the Jefferson Parkway Authority, a job he loves. During that time, the, I think the council is well aware, the audience may not be, the JPPHA has defeated legal challenges and forged agreements with neighboring stakeholders, acquired all of the right-of-way necessary to complete the highway, generated interest from multinational firms to finance and construct the highway, and nearly completed the required environmental review process. In summary, Bill has, in 10 years as deputy, completed more work to support the future construction of the Parkway than others have been able to achieve in 42 years since it was first put on a map somewhere. Bill has made outstanding contributions to the city management profession. After receiving his graduate degree from CU Denver School of Public Affairs, Bill has often returned to school as a part-time instructor out of his passion and commitment to preparing the next generation of managers. And he has also served local government in Colorado as president of the Colorado Municipal League. So all of this adds up to a professional career and a life well-lived on behalf of thousands and thousands and thousands of people in the state of Colorado. And for that, the Colorado City and County Managers congratulate Bill, and we thank him for your service. Thank you very much. Now... Believe it or not, Bill has seen this already, but I wanted to show it to you and let you know that this is, in Bill's possession, we had to steal it out of his office. He had, it's the first thing on his desk when people walk in that they see this. But in any case, no, actually, it's behind his desk. So, in any case, this is our recognition as Colorado City and County Managers Association, and it only is a small token of appreciation for the work you've done, for the passion you've shown, and for the commitment you have for public service. So Bill, thank you very much.
But wait, Bill, there's more. I'd like, it's my absolute honor to welcome to the podium State Senator Rachel Zensinger.
Thank you so much. It is a pleasure to be here. Yeah, we are going to pile on here, Bill, so get ready. We have a tribute here by the Colorado Senate, and I'm going to go ahead and read the tribute. It says, "Convened in the second regular session of the 71st General Assembly, we hereby extend the heartiest congratulations and commendation to Bill Ray. In gratitude of the honorable execution of his duties as deputy mayor of Arvada, and upon the occasion of his retirement, we reflect on his laudable career and contribution to the people and civic life of Colorado. As director of public works for the city of Arvada and the city manager for cities of Pagosa Springs, Grand Lake, and Cortez, for his leadership of the Jefferson County Public Parkway Authority, and for 40 years, 40 years of esteemed public service, we express our appreciation and recognize him as an example worthy of emulation. On request of Senator Rachel Zensinger, given this 16th day of April, 2018, state capital, Denver, Colorado, and it's signed by our president of the Senate, Kevin J. Grantham, and will be recorded in the State Journal."
Well, mostly in anticipation of Koshen, I have written multiple defenses of whatever he was going to say. I've never written anything like that in my life, so. It is truly an honor to stand here before you this evening, and really to appreciate the passion that you have, the passion that my colleagues have, and certainly the deep dedication of those in my profession work on behalf of community and public service, of growing communities greater day by day. My work is not especially different than those of anyone else. I'm very humbled, very humbled, to have this opportunity to be here tonight, and really to reflect that the work that you do, the work that we all do, is the work that we do in making our places ourselves and our neighbors better. And that's what I've truly appreciated about this profession, is its unrelenting optimism that we can make things better. I can't think of a better tribute than that. I would just like to take a moment, if I may, I truly appreciate the fact that my mother, Mary Lou Ray, was able to be here tonight. My son, Jordan Ray, and his darling bride, Cassandra. Thank you guys for coming. My friend and sweetheart Jenna, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you. It's really been my honor to have spent this career, and certainly the last 18 years, working in a variety of opportunities here at the city of Arvada. I certainly, Mark, I thank you for the opportunity to do that and for actually making all this happen, so. I really appreciate it. It was Mark who submitted the application, and it's just one of the great honors of my life, so, thank you so much, have a great night. And with your permission, I'm going to take my family out to dinner now, so.
Mr. Ray, enjoy, you deserve it. Thank you so much for your service. Okay, we'll move on to a public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. We do have a three-minute limit on any public comment, and I will call you up, and I'll call you up and I'll tell who's kind of up on deck, so if you can start getting yourself ready. First up, I'm going to call Scott Rink, and next up will be Christopher Wall, if you guys will make your way on down. Good evening, sir, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to discuss the Denver Recovery Center that is currently a facility at 20032 West 95th Place. It's my understanding that they put in a proposal to expand this facility. It's currently a five-member facility for drug rehab in a residential neighborhood, and they're looking to expand it to 12. I'm asking that you do everything within your power to deny that proposal. I don't think it's a benefit to anybody in the community, including the residents, who will be in a 4,000 to 5,000 square foot house, and having 12 people in that facility going through that type of treatment seems to be excessive, as far as the number of people that are in that community. So I just ask that you do everything within your power to deny that proposal. In addition, I don't think it's, it does not help any of the residents in that neighborhood. It's a very high population of children in that neighborhood, very close, right across the park from a school, one of the new schools in Arvada. So I would just wish that you'd take that into consideration when reviewing that proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Christopher Wall, and then next after that will be Ryan Davidson. Good evening, Mr. Wall.
Good evening. Thank you. I live at 20137 West 95th, which is right next to or within very, very close proximity to the same facility. I would like to thank you all for hearing us today, and Councilmember Jones and City Manager Devon had both attended our neighborhood meeting last week. So, our understanding is that the use for this property has been a little tricky. Initially, in the fall, it was for a senior living care facility, and then recently, in the last few days, they have sort of changed their objectives and moved towards this drug recovery home. I, in my own personal life, have had about 10 years of experience working with the Salvation Army and the Adult Rehabilitation Centers, or ARCs. It gave me an opportunity to gain really good insight on the many challenges associated with this particular group, both in human capital that's involved, as well as economic resources to make something like this successful. Salvation Army's been doing this for about 150 years. They have a pretty solid track record. If you ever had a chance to visit one of their facilities, it's a great way to learn about this type of organization. Today, my comments, I'm going to focus really kind of specifically on people and process, which is the homeowner has disclosed her expertise to be in the senior care arena. For this reason, she seems to have hired this group, the Denver Recovery Center. The organization came into existence last September, as best I can tell by the state records, filings and such. The category that I really want to talk with right out of the gate is, as a neighbor, as a concerned parent, I'm going to hone in on one of the populations within the addicts category, which is registered sex offenders. It's a difficult topic, it's one that we have to cover. In a couple of our meetings, we've determined a couple of different rules. Arvada itself seems to have a rule where you can have one resident that is a registered sex offender. In discussions with the Denver Recovery Center, they haven't developed any particular plan on how to do a background check. In further conversation, it doesn't sound like it might matter too much, as it's a voluntary program, so therefore all reporting is self-reported. Mr. Brown, the director of operations for the DRC, has said we'll have a rolling constituents coming through every 90 days. That's assuming they make the whole program. That's 20 individuals that will be introduced each year. If they only make it halfway through the program, now we're talking about 40, and that's just with our current limit of five that they're following with Arvada.
Mr. Wall, if you can hurry up, we have a three-minute limit, and you're at the end of it. If you want to conclude quickly, you may.
Okay, so, just in closing real quick, obviously, one out of five out of 40 is a pretty big number. We're concerned that if this is to come into place, five would be a great number. There's pretty good evidence with the Core Vision Group in Colorado that these are not necessarily as successful, if not run very well, very properly. So, I do appreciate the city and the council taking all of the necessary time to understand their proposal and their plans, and how they plan to operate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ryan Davidson, and then after that will be Peter Mann. Good evening, Mr. Davidson.
Good evening, councilmembers. I also wanted to speak on this issue that's currently at large with Candela's and the residents, and I won't retread old ground, but from a public safety standpoint, I'm extremely concerned about this proposal of increasing the limit from the statute-limited five to 12. I'm a deputy sheriff with the Adams County Sheriff's Office. I work in the court security unit. I'm a member of the Adams County Court for Veterans, which is a recovery court. We deal with specialty court cases for veterans in the Adams County justice system, and we deal with a large population of drug addicts and people who have drug-related offenses. And I've seen firsthand what this population is capable of, and their propensity for property crime primarily, but also they do tend to venture into the realm of personal crime, such as assaults and other things like that nature. And that's what our community is really opposed to this idea, really mainly for, is reasons such as public safety. And we would just humbly request that the city council do everything in its power and within the realm of the law to deny this proposal for increasing the number of people that will be occupying this home. As I understand, from the city manager who graciously came to our meeting last week, as well as Councilmember Jones, they did express their frustrations with the inability to stop this from continuing on. However, with that in mind, we can try and mitigate and limit the risk that this facility poses. What also hasn't been mentioned yet is the gentleman that runs the Denver Recovery Center is also a convicted felon with several violent felonies in his record in the state of Arizona. And the fact that maybe he's turning over a new leaf and trying to help addicts is commendable. However, we can't ignore the possibility that this population within our community and within our society does have... within our society does have a higher propensity for committing crimes. And I would just call upon this council and urge you, beg you even, to do what you can to help protect the members of this community and the members of the great city of Arvada, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Next up, we have Peter Mann, and after that on deck will be Rachel Smallwood. Good evening, Mr. Mann.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Proten. Thank you, members of council. My name is Peter Mann, and I'm also here to oppose the Simply Home Recovery Center at 20032 West 95th Place. I live about 600 feet from this home. I recognize that there is a definite need for this. I would personally like to thank Jefferson Center for what they do and the efforts that they go through, and unfortunately, I believe that what we're talking about is a world different from what they do. This type of recovery home is unfortunately an unregulated industry right now in Colorado. Patients can easily become the victims in something like this. We've seen plenty of instances of that, both here in Colorado and nationally. There are no regulations for inspections, program guidelines, community safety, things like this. Recovery has to happen, but I would love to see a little bit of resources and availability to any of these homes for, you know, inspection, what do we want to do? How can we help people? Placing this in a closest-knit community that I've ever lived in is pretty difficult. It's already having a noticeable effect on the community. There's many of my neighbors here, and I fear it's likely having an ill effect on the residents of the home. You know, looking out and knowing that all the neighbors are staring at you because they're all worried, can't be an easy environment to be in. So I please ask you that you block this application and allow for proper state and local regulations to be formed. I think this is an industry that has a place, and, you know, there is a drug addiction epidemic, and these definitely can help, but with proper regulations, guidelines, and resources available, I think they would be successful. Right now, the, you know, we risk the individuals seeking recovery, the residents of the neighborhood, and the good name of Arvada, and finding a reasonable solution is important, and unfortunately, I think this application is unreasonable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Appreciate your comments. Next up, we have Rachel Smallwood, and then after that will be Pat Osnus. Good evening, Rachel.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me, letting me speak. I'm Rachel Smallwood at 6108 Route ROU TT Court. I'm here tonight to ask you to work for a more efficient trash hauling process. Currently, we have about eight trash companies that service Arvada. Almost all non-HOA neighborhoods have multiple trash trucks driving up and down their streets each week, sometimes multiple times per day. This is incredibly wasteful, and I believe we can do better. Our neighbors in Golden, as well as HOAs within Arvada, have bargained with a single trash hauler to collect the city's or the neighborhood's trash. As a result, they pay much less for trash pickup than we do, and everybody gets their recycling picked up as part of the deal. In Arvada, we have to pay extra to have our recycling picked up, and Arvada only recycles about, has about a 12% recycling rate, which is one of the lowest in the state. We should start incentivizing good behavior by ensuring that all Arvadans get their recycling picked up at no extra fee and, in fact, a cheaper rate. These massive trucks that drive our streets also cause a lot of damage on our streets. If we could ensure just one truck, we could save a lot of money on street roof repair, as well as the residents of Arvada's money, because the streets that are better maintained will cause less damage on our cars. We can also increase air quality, reduce pollution, make our streets safer by reducing the big dangerous truck traffic off of our neighborhood streets, and decrease all of that unwarranted racket that they make in our quiet neighborhoods each day. This idea is very popular. In last year's city survey, 64% of participants said they supported or strongly supported a single hauler trash system. So please listen to the citizens and start pursuing a more efficient, quieter, cheaper solution to trash pickup in Arvada, and include residents in the discussion of what we want from this program. So if there is any resident here who agrees with this, call them, come in two weeks, say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Pat Osnus. Good evening, Mr. Osnus.
Good evening, everybody. I'm back again. I finally am talking about the Timberline Farms project. I finally did hear from the city manager's office with a letter that unfortunately missed the point. There were several items that I brought to your attention that were not addressed in the letter that I got from them, and we're still dealing with issues that are out there. And I don't know where to go from here. I tried to bring things to your attention. I did hear from the city manager's office, like I said, but unfortunately, the things were not addressed. So, one of the things that they, the city manager's office did say was that they were concerned about the time that staff was spending on my concerns, and I guess the point there is they don't know what time spent is until this thing goes to the next level. Then there'd be a lot of time spent. So, I don't know where to go from here.
Okay. Mr. Osnus, thanks for your comment. We will certainly continue to pay attention to it, and Mr. Pfeiffer, did you have a comment you'd like to-
Well, sir, I did go out there after a council meeting and looked for all the concerns you listed, and I could not find them. So, I spent time in your neighborhood as well. Just want you to know, we do react. We did look. I looked. And if there is any other concerns, I'll work with staff on it. I just want to be really clear that I personally went out there and walked your neighborhood.
Did you, if I may ask, did you see where the storm sewer system-
I looked at every one of them, in both cul-de-sacs and the main entry-in.
Did you see where the storm system is not completed?
It depends on your definition of completed, because the area is under construction.
The one out in front of my house is covered with a piece of plywood and dirt.
I didn't see any covered with dirt, but I'm here to, I'll call you aside, I just wanted you to know that some of us, actually all of us, will take it seriously. We have looked. We're going to-
Well, sir, I'm sorry.
...I don't see any issue right now. But I'll talk to staff a little bit more, and we can follow up with you again.
Well, in the letter that I got from them, from the city manager's office, it said that any further, you know, addressing of this is not going to change their mind. So, where do we go from here?
Mr. Osnus, thank you for your comments. Feel free to contact any one of us if you would like. That concludes all the folks who have signed up for public comment. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on any item not on our agenda tonight? Come on up if you guys both would make your way down, and if you'd give us your name and your address for the record, so we know who we're speaking to. We appreciate it.
Hi, Joel Faircloth, 20033 West 94th Lane. I'm also here to talk about the proposed project at 20032 95th Place in the Candela's section of the city. As we understand it, it's currently in the planning phase, and like many others here tonight, I want to express my concerns to you in the hope that you will examine this proposal with the utmost scrutiny. At, no doubt at this time, you've heard from many of us, and we're all very concerned. One of the concerns we have, obviously, is Fair Housing Act, right? None of us are here suggesting you violate federal law. The concern we have right now is that the city is using it or hiding behind it to either fast-track this proposal or push it through, hiding behind that law. So, we understand that that's a concern, but that's not what this is. We understand that you can have five unrelated residents in the home. That's what you have now. Our concern is expanding a four-bedroom home to accommodate 12 people. That's not a home. That's a facility. It's a very big difference. So, I don't want to recap what everyone else here has said. Excuse me. I just want to kind of expand on a couple of things. I refer to the DRC, the Denver Recovery Center. They stated at the town meeting we had two weeks ago, they want 40 of these homes in our communities. Not necessarily Arvada, but 40. 40 of these homes. So, they're looking to expand very quickly. They don't do background checks. They don't check sex offender registries. I have two 10-year-olds that walk to and from that brand-new K-8 school. That concerns me. That concerns me greatly as a resident of this city. So, we're asking you to do a few things, and consider a few things. Our 12 non-related residents living, some of these people are going to be living in the basement of that home with a kitchen. Is that safe with a limited egress from that basement? Does that meet fire code? Have there been traffic studies done? 12 residents supposedly are going to either to or from work or to or from drug treatment with kids walking to school around a traffic circle. No one's looked at the traffic studies, I'm sure. What about 911 response times? I haven't seen a single Arvada PD in my neighborhood since I moved there a year ago. Not one. Now, we would like to see the codes toughened here to raise the bar, make the hurdles higher so that these homes don't infest our communities, not because they're not important. They are. People need treatment. Make the hurdles higher to make the homes better. As we said before, they're not regulated. Start to create some processes and procedures, health codes, fire codes, et cetera, to make these homes better for the people in them and the people in the communities. Thank you.
Mr. Faircloth, thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Come on up, and if you'd give us your name and your address, please.
Sure. I'm Sean Kaiser. I reside at 20052 West 95th Place in Arvada, Colorado. I'm also here to speak about the proposed DRC in Candela's. This is two doors down from my residence. I have two teenage daughters at home, so there's certainly some concerns around the safety of our community. But there's also concerns around the safety of the residents that are proposed to be living in this facility. We don't know if this is going to be detention center or if it's going to be a relief center, but it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense with the limited amount of public transportation that's available, the limited amount of access to health facilities, the limited amount of access to emergency services in that area for them to have a residence that includes 12 residents within the home. This also is becoming, sounding more and more like a commercial property than it is a residential property, even though there are people that are going to be living there. They're not going to be supervised 24/7, and this creates some concerns for the people in the community in our neighborhood. And we're asking you to do everything that you can to help protect our community, protect our kids, and help make sure that we have a safe Arvada to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Come on up, and if you'd give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Albert. I'm at 19964 West 94th Lane in Candela's. I'm here to talk about the DRC Recovery Unit. Thank you for taking our comments tonight. This means a lot to us. I don't have a lot of facts for you. I think everyone who's presented tonight has done a great job in bringing this to you. What I want to bring to you is speak to you from the heart. I'm a single parent. I live there in Candela's. I have two kids who go to school there, who walk home, and I'm very, very concerned for the safety of this neighborhood with five residents in this building that's only a block away from my home. And if we're going to consider doubling that, that is just a huge concern. It's not just the traffic and everything that goes along with it, but there are behaviors that come out of this home just in the yard that we're recording and reporting and things like that, that are so disturbing for the citizens of this community. And I just am pleading with you guys to consider our rights, too. We've done the right thing. We're, you know, living here in Arvada, which I've done for over 16 years now because it's such a great community to live in, and now I don't feel safe in my own neighborhood. So I'm asking you guys to really investigate this from every legal aspect that you can to make sure that you're providing the safe neighborhoods that we, as citizens, really cherish and expect from you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bauer. I live at 6536 Upton Street. I'm a member of the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, and I'm here on behalf of Keegan Conlee, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, but he asked me to come and read a statement. As a committee, we wanted to provide an update on our activities for the council for 2017. The three primary goals of the Sustainability Committee for 2017 are, number one, inform Arvada residents of Arvada's current trash hauling and recycling collection system. We are brainstorming ideas and doing research into what other cities are doing to encourage the community to increase recycling rates. ASAC's goal is to prevent a plan for, is to present, excuse me, a plan for a more efficient and cost-effective trash and recycling collection system for us at the ASAC City Council Planned Workshop in December. Two, our second goal is develop community goals for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. The city recently purchased a greenhouse gas inventory to assess current community emission rates. The Sustainability Committee is currently reviewing the spreadsheet, its assumptions and inputs, and is determining achievable and aspirational goals for the committee. And three, finally, ASAC is working with the Neighborhood's Connected Program to distribute sustainability-related information and to encourage a more connected Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment tonight on any item not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period for items not on our agenda. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have just one item on our consent agenda tonight. It is Resolution R 18-037, a resolution approving a Sixth Amendment to an employment agreement by and between the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority and Maureen Seafair as Secretary and Executive Do I have a motion from anyone on council about the consent agenda? Ms. Miller?
I'll make a motion if there aren't any comments. This is my first motion. I have not done this before. I know. I'm going to read the suggestion. I move that R 18-037, a resolution approving a Sixth Amendment to an employment agreement by and between the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority and Maureen Seafair as Secretary and Executive Director, be approved.
Okay, motions for approval. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos with Mayor Williams and Councilmember Jones absent. Okay, next up, we have ordinances on first reading, and I'll call on Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you. Let me just pull it up, because I'm going to do it a little bit differently. I move that Council Bill 18-016, an ordinance adopting the floodplain map dated February 13, 2018, as the official floodplain map of the city of Arvada, superseding the dated September 15, 2015. Also, Council Bill 18-017, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada. Dylan Walker, 6315 Quaker Street. Also, Council Bill 18-018, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada. Dylan Walker, from Jefferson County R1 Residential to City of Arvada RE Residential Estates, enamending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 6315 Quaker Street. Also, Council Bill 18-019, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada. Sabell, 5650 Ward Road. Also, Council Bill 18-020, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada. Sabell City of Arvada, from Jefferson County A2 Agriculture to the City of Arvada PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential. 12 dwelling units per acre and C1 conservation, enamending the official zoning map of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 5650 Ward Road. As well as Council Bill 18-021, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, is it Buhunin? From City of Arvada RL Residential Low Density to PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential. 3.9 dwelling units per acre, enamending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, generally located southwest of the intersection of 67th Avenue and Balsam Street. Now, the last one, Council Bill 18-022, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Jefferson County Communications Center Authority, also known as JeffCom, for a member services agreement. And I got to say my official legal words here. Give me a quick second, because I'll have crustaceae all over me. Hold on. All be approved on first reading, order published in full, and public hearing date set for May 7, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Did I get it there, Mr. Daly?
Okay, so the motion is for approval of the ordinances on first reading. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Okay, so next, we have our public hearings. We'll start with, with resolution, or excuse me, with- or excuse me, with the public hearings on Ralston Ridge. Mr. Devon, you want to lead us off on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are informed these hearings will proceed. Before I introduce Rita McConnell to introduce this item, the city attorney has a few comments to make.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Devon. With that, I will open the public hearing on Resolution R. 18-038, a resolution setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the city of Arvada, Colorado, Ralston Ridge, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street. Also, open Council Bill 18-008, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street, ordinance number 4630. Also, Council Bill 18-009, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, from Jefferson County A1 and A2 Agriculture, to City of Arvada PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 4.05 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street, ordinance number 4631. We'll also hear Ralston Ridge Preliminary Development Plan, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street, and finally, also the Ralston Ridge Preliminary Platte, 7120 and 7000 Indiana Street. Mr. Daly?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, there are a couple of preliminary matters I want to make the council and those that are going to be participating in this public hearing tonight aware of. It's important for everyone to understand that the city charter and the city code both indicate that there are four affirmative votes that would be required to approve the matters that are on the agenda tonight in this particular public hearing. And because of that, as council notes, there's two missing members of the city council. And so, staff has been on the phone at least a couple of times today with the developer, seeking information from the developer, whether the developer wanted to proceed tonight, or whether the developer wanted a continuance. It's my understanding that at this point in time, the developer is willing to move forward with the matter tonight. But I want to caution the council that because the matters in question require an affirmative four votes for adoption, that I think in the spirit of fairness, before the public hearing is closed, Mr. Mayor, that you certainly inquire, Mr. Elliott, whether in fact he needs additional time to respond to some of the issues that have been raised. This is, I think it's fair to say it's a little bit risky to move forward with a matter when there's only five council members there. And of course, certainly neither the citizens nor Mr. Elliott knew that that's what the situation was going to be tonight, and staff certainly didn't know it as well. So, I wanted to put that on the record, and so I would just ask you, Mayor, that, you know, before you close the public hearing at the end of this matter, that you inquire Mr. Elliott about whether he needs a continuance to be able to respond to some of the issues that have been raised during the hearing. The other matter is a matter that staff has been working on with Mr. Elliott and his attorney relative to whether a metropolitan district is going to be involved. While it's clear that there's no metropolitan district request tonight on the agenda, there have been discussions in the past, and I think it's only fair to the applicant that we make it clear tonight. And I did speak with Mr. Elliott before the meeting, but I want to make it clear on the record that at this point in time, staff's position, should a request be made down the road for a metro district, and if this development is in fact approved, that staff's recommendation to the council at this point in time would be not to create a metropolitan district. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. And certainly, as we proceed through the hearing, through the usual process, we can confirm with Mr. Elliott his understanding of those matters, both as to potential continuance at the appropriate time, and also his acknowledgement as to the status of staff's recommendation relative to a metropolitan district.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Rita McConnell will introduce these items.
Thank you. This proposal is for 49 single-family homes on 13.27 acres, resulting in a density of 4.05 dwelling units per acre. The request includes modifications pertaining to arterial setback, lot size, front and side setbacks, and lot coverage. Staff finds the proposal in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Planning Commission voted in favor of all the requests, seven to zero. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log, and they are in order. Linda Hoover, Senior Planner, as well as support staff, is available to answer staff questions. The applicant, Chris Elliott, will be making the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll make the posting log and affidavit a permanent part of the record, and ask anyone who plans to speak on this matter, if you'd please raise your hand, so I may swear you in. It's a testimony you're about to give in this case, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Mr. Elliott, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And now I have to learn how to operate this thing. Don't you have to turn it around and hold it upside down?
It's a new flicker.
Oh, it's got directions right there. Forward. It says forward right there, doesn't it? Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you, and we also appreciate the circumstances that we all find ourselves in with regard to members of the council available tonight. And I want to commend your staff for their absolute transparency with regard to that. I think it's also important to note that you guys have the best staff in the metro area. And I can say that honestly, and since we're on television, the other staffs in the other cities are able to see that, recognize that. But I do believe that. We've appreciated working with you all now for a number of years. Whisper Creek, Liden Rock, Richards Farm, all of those. It's been a great experience. With regard to this particular property, this is one that was part of a larger ownership. In fact, the same family has owned this property since 1867. The property that's highlighted here in the yellow and green colors with the street showed the two separate parcels, and the parcel in the middle are all still owned by that same West family. The parcel in the middle is owned by one portion of the family, and the rest of the properties that are here before you tonight are part of an ownership that is a trust on behalf of many of the beneficiaries of that West family. And I think there's several of them here tonight as well, looking forward to seeing some ultimate disposition. As with any property that gets passed over in the process of developing new communities, this particular property has inherited many of the burdens and benefits of being the last one in the door. The property, as you may well know, is adjacent to Indiana, and Indiana has been a thorn in the side of the city for a great many years. I grew up north of this, and I can always remember the sounds of horrible crashes at the intersection of 72nd and Indiana because of the nature of the design of the roadway, the fact that you have the canal on one side, and you've got a narrow strip of roadway that makes the connection to what has become a pretty vital and important portion of the city. We have a chance to fix that. This property, and I think this slide probably gives you a little bit better indication, but the top parcel, you can see the dashed line that's outside of the colored area, and that is actually the area that is being dedicated to the city for the right-of-way of the expansion of Indiana as it comes through here. This is going to be an intersection that's not going to be recognizable once it's completed, and it's going to solve a significant amount of the safety and transportation hazards that we've seen at this location for decades. Because of the nature of the roadway and the fact that the canal exists on the west side of Indiana, the bulk of the expansion of the roadway will have to occur on our side of Indiana. In fact, the more than half of the ultimate roadway will be constructed out of that portion of the property that is subject to dedication. On the southbound side, there's really very little additional right-of-way, if any, that will be added, and those lanes will continue to go through as they have. In addition to the improvements to Indiana, there are widening and additional improvements to 72nd. At that intersection, that the roadways will widen out, the signal will be modified significantly to provide for the necessary turning lanes and through lanes. And then, what doesn't show here, but is all important as well, is that when you get on the north side of 72nd, Indiana will be further widened on the east side of its current alignment, and that property owner is negotiating with the city to provide that right-of-way as well. So, this particular property is providing right-of-way, both the north and south parcels providing right-of-way, and is responsible for a portion of the reconstruction of Indiana as it comes through here. In terms of land use, the property cooperated with the city when it amended its comprehensive plan a few years ago, and there was some debate about what was the most appropriate uses within these properties. Again, access is limited, and the parcels are small. What is it that could be done? And ultimately, through a great deal of discussion, the determination was that the suburban residential designation was appropriate for the property, and in fact, that there be some modest increase in density from the properties to the east and south because of the impact of the improvements that were anticipated to Indiana and 72nd. The ultimate designation was for suburban residential with a density of up to five units per acre. When we got involved with the property, we initially attempted to put all three parcels together, but as is the circumstance in many situations like that, you're not always able to get everybody to cooperate. But one of the things that we did do is provide for a design of the middle parcel so that if and when it should develop, it can integrate into the street systems that we create here and not result in additional accesses to Indiana. There is an existing access to the Shadow Mountain neighborhood, and you can see it on this slide, designated as West 70th Drive. So at some point in time, if and when the middle parcel develops, that opportunity will exist for a connection to the neighborhood to the east. The specific lots and the specific home types, architecture and so forth, are included within the PDP, but I can tell you that the intention was to create, again, a step between the existing Shadow Mountain to the east and the intensity that you have on Indiana. On the west side of Indiana, you can see where there's a reference there that talks about south parcel. On that, underneath that, and on the west side, is a duplex community that I would submit is at a higher density than what we're proposing here. Everything that we have is single-family detached, and in terms of its compatibility and its size, it's very much similar to what's been done to the east and within the new communities that exist in this general vicinity. We developed Liden Rock. This is very similar to lot size, home size, lot type, home type, as you would find there. One of the other considerations that we had in putting together the plan was, we've got this major impact with Indiana. How can we deal with that? And we came up with a streetscape that concentrated a significant amount of open space adjacent to Indiana, including landscaping far beyond what would typically be required, along with a solid fencing and with some gaps to provide for visibility opportunities into the community. We also lowered the subdivision so that it is below what would be existing with the expansion of Indiana, so that you'll have the fence, you'll have the community itself will drop down, and then go from there. That'll provide added benefits in terms of visibility and noise considerations and the like. The anticipation is that we will concentrate on homes that include both a more attainable, as well as a target for an empty nester. And there will be a mixture of ranch and two-story plans, but a predominance, frankly, of ranches because we believe that that is a segment within this particular market that's missing. This particular slide shows you that fence concept that I discussed earlier. Along Indiana, there will be a solid fence, but there will be breakups within it so that it creates some design interest as you move along 72nd. This shows fencing around the individual properties, and we will restrict that to all, our rail-type fence will be all that is permitted within the community itself. Here again is a view of some of the fencing styles. I'll zip through the architecture. And with that, we do have four items that are before you. We have the annexation of the property. We have the zoning. We have a PDP, and we have a preliminary plat. We believe that we've met the standards. We've worked closely with folks in the neighborhood to the east. One of the additional things that a parcel that's kind of left to the end ends up having to deal with, much like it has to deal with improvements to Indiana and 72nd, is some significant drainage issues that were put off as the adjacent properties developed. And in this particular case, we will be able to make accommodations along the southerly property line to move stormwater that, at this point in time, has nowhere else to go. Coming from areas to the west and north down Indiana, it will turn, it will come through the southern portion of this property and be detained so that it doesn't cause any further issues for the folks that live in the existing Shadow Mountain neighborhood to the east. There were concerns at Planning Commission about the amount of open space, and we agreed that we would work towards alternatives. And I'm happy to say that in collaboration with staff, we've looked at taking and doing a unique approach with detention facilities to actually put the detention facilities underground so that we can use the top of the detention facility as an open space and a playground area to accommodate the community. There was also concern about pedestrian access, and although there are a pretty significant tree lawn and sidewalk system that will exist on both 72nd and Indiana, we have been able to make a connection to the east through the 70th Avenue connection for the southerly parcel, and we've had some very encouraging conversations with the middle parcel on potential access there for pedestrian accesses that would also get that to 70th. The sidewalk that'll actually go along 72nd will be considerably wider than normal and will be set back from the driveway. and will be set back from the driveway, and there is existing park facilities within Shadow Mountain as well and within a couple-minute walk as a result of those connections. So with that, happy to answer your questions, and go from there.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, we'll have some questions for you here in a minute. I first want to see if there's anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment about this item. If you do, come on up. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Caitlin Roich, and I live at 6928 Howell Street in the Maple Valley subdivision, directly south from these parcels. The first thing that I wanted to address is that when we attended the Planning Commission meeting regarding this development, it was mentioned that only right turns would be allowed into and out of these developments from Indiana Street. I want to know how the developer is going to address that and enforce that because the development across the street on Indiana, those townhomes that Mr. Elliott mentioned, despite being a right turn only, people turn left out of there all the time because there is no infrastructure to keep them from doing so. The second thing that I wanted to address was the retention ponds at the southeast corner. I think Mr. Elliott addressed that very well in terms of the parcels. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that even with this proposed right-of-way and access through Seventieth Avenue, it would still take an adult walking at a regular walking speed, 14 minutes, to get to the Ralston Creek Trail and the park in Shadow Mountain that has playground facilities. Imagine how much longer that would take with a toddler. And I know Arvada prides itself in having parks and open space within 10 minutes' walk of most residents, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this proposal? Come on down, sir. And if you could give us your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Mark Sally. I live at 7550 Loveland Circle in Saddle Brook. It's 8007. I didn't make the Planning Commission, but since living out there, traffic on Indiana and Seventy Second certainly is a problem. On the map, the developer showed a widening of Indiana that looked like it would be for right turns. He made mention of a widening of Seventy Second, but it wasn't visible on there, and I wondered, I suppose, whether or not you could address that. It didn't appear on the map that it would be widened. Sidewalk was mentioned there. There is no sidewalk there along Seventy Second. It's narrow, cars, you know, are jockeying to make a right turn there. It seems pretty constricted. I made a couple notes here just a minute.
Can you just go through a few screens? They show the streets and stuff that he's referring to.
Yeah, but...
I just want to have a picture of it.
So is that pictured on Seventy Second? Does that show a widening of the street?
Well, you know, sir, if you want to go ahead and just continue with the comments, we'll have the applicant address those when he comes back up.
All right, thanks. Thank you. I think that's mainly what I wanted to address. It's traffic concerns, and I don't know that he can speak for property owners north of there and what they're going to do, and he made reference to the middle parcel there that he's had good conversations about access or something. Well, conversations aren't decisions, and so I think we just stick to what we know, and you make a decision based upon what you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this? Come on down, sir. And if you'd please give us your name and address.
My name is Ron Corson, 14633 West 69th Place in Maple Valley. And my, being on West 69th Place, I border the back fence between the west properties. Right across that is, and as I understand it, you talked about...
Sir, go ahead and address us, if you would.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He'll get an opportunity to respond, so go ahead and just talk to us.
Okay, the drainage coming down, and my property is right up against the yellow on the south side, and so the concern I have is, where is that going? Is that flowing right on into our properties in Maple Valley who are, you know, are bordered there? And that's one concern I have, and the other concern I have is, how close is the boundary to that back fence, the borderline? If it's real close, it's very intrusive.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
That's it, right at this point.
Okay. Sir, thank you so much for your comment. We appreciate it. Hey, anybody, anyone else like to... Okay, Mr. Elliott, would you like to... Oh, I'm sorry, did... Sir, come on up. I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Please give us your name and address, if you would.
Russ Healy, 7025 Ladiola Street. There are two concerns that I have. First is the connecting street along Seventieth Drive. In the previous planning session, they said that they were going to connect that to Indiana Street, and my concern, and I expressed my concern, that due to the traffic on Indiana, people would create that as a cut-through to avoid Seventy Second Street and Indiana, that intersection, and avoid making a right on Seventy Second Street and use that as a shortcut. And I know that you're planning a connection to the Ralston Creek area, and I mentioned also that, you know, there are children and families that use that corridor to get to the park, and with the increased traffic, especially with people in a hurry getting home from work, that it would become more dangerous for residents and pedestrians to use that corridor if they connect to Indiana. And my second concern is that, and I went and I got plans of an amenity, and the amenity said, and this is not, it's just kind of an idea, an amenity, and it was presented as part of the plans going forward. And in the southeastern portion of the property, which is the open space, first off, it's very steep grade to get down there. It probably drops off six or eight feet from the elevation of the proposed elevation of the properties there. And the amenity says that they're going to provide a basketball court. And not that I oppose basketball, but if you put in a basketball court, that would kind of eliminate kind of the environment or the family amenities of a recreational space, you know? Kids would like to throw baseballs, have a catch with a football, play soccer, you know, more family-oriented, and putting in a basketball court in that area would kind of limit, you know, the activities of the families. And Mr. Elliott said that he was, in his last statement, that he was not leaning that way, that it was more grassy, open space, but I just want to express my concern about putting in a basketball court. That would kind of limit the activity in that area. And that's it.
Okay. Sir, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out tonight. Sir, come on down. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Jerry Jaggers. I live at 14011 West 87th Drive in Arvada. Came familiar with this property about two and a half years ago, worked with, communicated with a number of different developers about the property. Many of them had difficulty in trying to comply with the comprehensive plan for that property. Many of them had difficulty trying to deal with the road situation with it, but from my perspective, Mr. Elliott and his team were able to meet all the challenges, combine, I mean, to bring forth a program that was within the comprehensive plan, had different styles, and dealt with what, to me, were almost insurmountable challenges in coming forth with what he has at this point, and I heartily recommend that you approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else who'd like to come on up? If you could give us your name and address?
Hi, I'm Leah Mainz, and I live in 7126 Ladiola Street, right across the street from where they would like to develop houses, and I'm here to talk to you today as a 12-year-old, not as an adult with adult concerns, but with 12-year-old concerns. I love listening to the horses and across the street, and I feel like when you want to develop houses there, it just will add added, I don't know, civilization that we're not... And I've seen Richard's Farm go up and all the houses that have been there, and it's kind of just houses going up everywhere that I see. And the one thing that I love about Colorado is, you know, there's that open land everywhere, and that's what I love to see, and so I believe that when you put up these houses, it'll just eliminate some of the open land. And the thing about Arvada is we have those plots of open land everywhere that we can really just see the agriculture there and everything that's not just houses and development and the concerns of moving our city forward, but just like letting it lay back and have it be just Arvada. Thank you.
Leah, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and making public comments tonight. And folks, folks, we conduct our hearings without applause or anything. Leah, congratulations on coming out and standing up and making your comment, but within here, we don't cheer or boo or clap or anything like that, and so if we can please maintain that, I'd appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? So our last chance here. Ma'am, I think you've already...
Can I just bring this up before you guys look at?
Yeah, if you want to bring it up and put it on the table, that'd be just fine, sure.
Can you just pass it around?
That'd be fine, too. You give it to the clerk right next to you there, she'll get it around to us. Okay. Is anybody else who'd like to comment on this application here tonight? Okay, Mr. Elliott, you want to come back up and answer any of those questions you
You really want me to follow Leah?
A very tough act to follow, that's for sure.
Very much so. Let me first indicate that, again, talking about the improvements to Indiana and Seventy Second, the plan, as I understand it, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, is that obviously we have only one access point on Indiana, and it will have a physical, concrete, what they call a pork chop, which will actually divide so that you can't make, you got to go through some tortured effort to make a left turn out of there. And there are many things that can be done to enhance that so that you don't make a right or a left turn from that, and that would be from the southerly parcel. The northerly parcel has no access to Indiana. It does have access to Seventy Second, and again, it's a right-in, right-out only, and in that particular location, there's a raised median. I would assume at some point there may be a raised median on Indiana, which would further preclude, right? Further preclude access, people defying their lives and the odds of turning left out of this community as well as the one to the west. With regard to the time it takes to walk to the park, we took very seriously the concerns that were registered at Planning Commission, and I've got two artificial knees, and I actually was able to walk from this property to the park in less than 10 minutes, so I think it is possible with that access point. I think it's also important to note that we talked about the detention facilities at the Planning Commission hearing, and Mr. Healy mentioned some of the ideas that we tossed about with staff with regard to how to not make them only detention facilities, how do we use them for other things? And we looked at putting retaining walls inside of them and putting sport courts down inside the detention facility. That was one concept. But ultimately, what we discussed with staff that I really think is a novel approach, one frankly you don't see in a residential setting, and that is that you put the detention underground. You actually put, build a facility, a structure that the detention goes into, and then you cover it over with grass, trees, other park-type facilities. And these are significant tracks and can contain a significant amount of park-like value as a result of that. Mr. Corson mentioned the drainage, and I think I touched on the fact that this property is a recipient of drainage concerns and leftover drainage issues that were the sins of prior developments, and right now, there's a considerable amount of water that is transmitted across the southerly edge of the property. And there will be a landscape tract with a swale and other facilities within it along the entire southerly boundary so that we can correct the problems that exist with stormwater, including, again, underground facilities, storm sewer and so forth. The condition at our southeast corner, and as stormwater exits there onto really people's backyards, is going to change dramatically. We're going to go in there and we're going to make some significant improvements there to convey stormwater to the east into the adjacent roadway, I think it's Gladiola, and there are facilities within Gladiola that then can handle the throttled-down stormwater that will get there and convey it ultimately to Ralston Creek. With that, happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. So I will open it up to questions from City Council, and start off with Mr. McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a few questions, Mr. Elliott, just for clarification. I'm wondering about the sidewalk on Seventy Second, is that, will that be a detached sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, so that's detached, okay. And the detention pond areas, the one on the north is about the size of one and a half to two building lots.
Correct.
And one on the bottom might be a little larger.
Correct.
Will both of those be recreation, open-space areas?
Yes.
So both of those?
They'll have the undergrounded detention facility.
Okay. And you'd mentioned that the, if the middle parcel or when the middle parcel is developed, perhaps at some time in the future, that there would be an integrated traffic plan, traffic flow, that will, I assume, also be true for the drainage plan?
Absolutely. In fact, we're taking care of their needs now.
Okay, so that's all the questions I have at this point. Thank you.
Actually, I'm glad that you mentioned it with the connection to Seventieth, and you see this, you guys see this more than we do, but there's a lot of circumstances where streets are stubbed into future development areas, and the community grows accustomed to the fact that that street doesn't contain traffic. The connections that we anticipate making when the middle piece develops will be such that, at the pleasure of council, you could prohibit access to Seventieth and still make the middle piece work without further access to Indiana. So if you chose to make it, for instance, a pedestrian-only access, you can do that. If you choose to make it access for the benefit of this community and the Shadow Mountain community, you can do that. community, you can do that. We try to give you some alternatives in terms of transportation and access through the area.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeifer?
My question is round, I guess that's Road B on your southern parcel. So it doesn't quite align to the property across the way. Where were, you were kind of hinting that maybe in the future there could be a light, and I was a little confused on where you were referring to, an alignment to another, another area, unless you're referring to 70th? So I was trying to capture where that, when you mentioned that. I thought it was on Indiana.
I think I was probably talking about the signal at 72nd.
Okay.
Indiana. There, you're right, the two right-in, right-outs don't line up.
And I look to staff, I'm assuming that's fine, and that's what we want, okay. The other question is, I wasn't really clear on the contribution to the intersection improvements. Was that the, giving the property? Is that what? I wanted to understand, because there's a project that's going on, and I'm trying to understand how we're working together to improve that intersection.
Sure. The, it's a little complicated. But the city has acquired and paid for the right-of-way associated with Indiana and 72nd. Part of our obligation, and is contained in the annexation agreement, we reimburse the city for the costs associated with that. Then in addition to that, we pay for cash and lieu, certain improvements to-
Okay, so it's cash and lieu to help out there?
Right. But that allows the city to build it all as one big facility, and we've made our contribution at that point, both in terms of right-of-way and improvements.
Okay. That's the only questions I have.
Ms. Ford?
So, Mr. Elliott, excuse me, in terms of traveling around the subdivision, by walking, just say, how will people get around? Are there sidewalks on each of these roads as identified?
Yes.
Okay, so Road D and A, they all have sidewalks?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, is there a sidewalk along Indiana?
Yes.
There is, from-
That will be part of the construction.
And that'll be a continuation from the first development down to the second development? I mean, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Flats of-
Right.
There will be, okay. So the middle one won't have a sidewalk, though, at this point, or?
Matt's shaking his head, so that won't be built as part of the, the current project, but ultimately, when the middle piece develops, that sidewalk connection will be made.
That is correct.
Okay, so if somebody did want to walk down Indiana, or say they wanted to ride their bicycle on Indiana, they couldn't do that then, right?
There will be bike lanes along Indiana Street, but not a pedestrian connection via sidewalk or trail connection through that middle piece. It was not proposed as a part of the intersection improvement project.
And then, can you tell me how large the two detention basins would be in terms of acreage? I'm, I'm sure they're less than an acre, but-
You're going to test my limited eyesight here.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of the amount of open space.
10,000 square feet.
Is it 10,000 square feet?
About two lots.
And so plus that.
About two lots, okay. Thank you. I think that's it.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I don't have as much of a question about this development. First, I would like to commend you on solving some great challenges with this intersection. That was difficult to do. We knew that we needed to widen Indiana and 72nd post haste, but I think you did a great job also with the compatibility to the neighborhood of the east, so I commend you for that as well. I like that you are considering ranch homes because they're more attainable than some of the bigger homes that we've seen recently, and-
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'm going to interrupt you quickly. This is our time to question the applicant.
Ask questions, all right. I want to talk to you about the 70th, the 70th Drive. The one thing that I would like, I do agree with Mr. Haley, and I would like to know what, I guess, how we could connect this southern area to 70th Drive if we could make it at all possible to make it a little bit more accessible to that next neighborhood.
The, the next neighborhood, I'm not sure which you're-
To the east.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't sure if there was any way at all to, to make that a little bit more accessible to the east.
Actually, there is right-of-way for 70th that extends onto our property that would provide the opportunity for curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a minimal amount of paving. So there's quite a wide strip there. And that's one of the reasons I mentioned that if you wanted to keep that just as a pedestrian access, there's more than enough room to make that happen. If you want it to be a street, then portion of the street can be had there, and then the balance when and if the middle piece develops. Does that answer the question?
Any other questions from members of council? Mr. Elliott, I actually do have maybe a question or two as well. So the, you had mentioned that, that the potential connection to 70th Drive can happen or not happen, depending on the development in that, in that third parcel in the future and/or council action at that time. I'm assuming that means that, that the Fire Department, the utilities, everybody has weighed in on that possibility and agree that either of those possibilities is possible?
We haven't had specific conversations with the Fire Department about that because the middle piece isn't at play, but we did work with staff on a layout for the middle piece that could either have or have not the connection to 70th. And I would submit that the access point on, from Indiana to the southerly parcel would then connect to the north, and then there's that ultimate access back on the 72nd. So there's a way to move around in there, and there's a loop system that ends up being created as a part of that.
Right, okay. And then, my only other question is to the, to the underground detention areas, that, you know, that's a little bit unusual for us to see in this type of a development. We see it in some of the more dense developments we see around Old Town. Are those situated such that they, they flow by gravity and don't require mechanical stuff that requires future maintenance? And if they do, what's the mechanism for dealing with that? Is that a homeowners association issue, or do those become city facilities that the city has responsibility of, or how does that work?
The answer to your first question, the first portion of your question, is that it's basically a detention pond with a cap on it. I mean, there's multiple ways you can do it with pipes and other things, but it's, in essence, that's what it is. It's got a cap over the top.
Doesn't require pumps or anything like that?
No.
No water needs to be lifted?
No, it's, there is, it functions just exactly the same as an open detention pond would. And the answer to your second part of your question is that it would be a, the city would have an easement on it, but it would be the ultimate responsibility of the homeowners association to maintain that.
Maintain, okay, thank you. Mr. Pfeifer, you have another question?
Well, that brings up a good point. So what about smell or cleaning them out? Because I know some of the detention ponds, sometimes the city gets involved with to clear them out, or how would that be handled, or?
Because they don't smell good?
Well, they get full, and then, you know, the hot weather hits, and then we get all sorts of other issues that start popping up. And now that it's being somewhat capped, is it, how does that operate? I guess I haven't seen that happen yet in a, in a community yet.
Actually, the, part of the problem with most open detention ponds are that you've got a, a vegetated bottom-
Mm-hmm.
-associated with that, and that's what smells. Water sits on there, and then you get some mold and mildew that results because of the water sitting on top of that. This is a concrete facility that doesn't have that, but nonetheless, we will still make it a requirement that, that be flushed and cleaned on a regular periodic basis.
Okay, thank you. Any more? Ms. Ford?
So that leads to another question that I have. With it being a concrete facility, and if you were to plant trees and grass on top of it, is that problematic for the concrete?
Not at all. You put skyscrapers up with trees and grass on the top, on the roofs there, in fact, the whole Denver Green Initiative contemplates putting vegetation on the roofs of buildings. So I think it's a cool way to innovate and take advantage of what you, what you're doing there.
As long as the water doesn't sit there, right?
Correct.
As long as it is able to move off the concrete and keep it fairly dry, right?
That's part of the design.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are there any more questions from council? Okay. Mr. Elliott, I'm going to kind of throw it back to you for just, for just a moment. We're at the, the portion of the hearing where we would take action on your proposal. Are you comfortable with us moving forward with, with where we're at tonight?
I am.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Would, I would like to call on now Mr. Councilmember McGough.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you close the hearing?
Not, I will be happy to close the public hearing and now call on Councilmember McGough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I'm prepared to make a motion. We can move ahead with that?
Please do.
Okay. I move that R 18-038, a resolution setting forth certain findings of fact and conclusions as to the annexation of certain land into the city of Arvada, Colorado, Ralston Ridge, 7120 and 7,000 Indiana Street be approved.
Okay, so the motion is for approval of the findings of fact, the resolution for the findings of fact. All members would please vote. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Mr. McGough?
I move that Council Bill 18-008, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, 7120 and 7,000 Indiana Street be approved, subject to the updated conditions of approval on final reading, numbered 4630, and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval. Mr. McGough, can I get your vote? Thank you. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Mr. McGough?
I move that Council Bill 18-009, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Ralston Ridge, from Jefferson County A1 and A2 Agriculture, to city of Arvada, PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, 4.05 Dwelling Units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 7120 and 7,000 Indiana Street be approved on final reading, numbered 4631, and published by title only. This motion is based on findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval on the rezoning. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Mr. McGough?
I move that Ralston Ridge Preliminary Development Plan, 7120 and 7,000 Indiana Street be approved, subject to the attached updated condition of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I have a comment. So for Leah, you know, I don't disagree with you at all, but in this kind of world right now, people have property rights, and they have the ability to sell it, and then somebody's allowed to develop it. I lived, I live by horses, too. I think that's what makes Arvada so great and, and unique. And Equestrian Park right there, which is a city facility that was actually donated to us a few Christmases ago. We try our best to do what we can to preserve that area, you know, but, you know, it's, it's refreshing to have you come up and talk from a kid's view because I think it's equally important as an adult. So I'm sorry, we're not going to make your wishes tonight, but it's duly noted. As for the developer, Mr. Elliott, I do agree with you, this is a difficult property. We've heard it before and discussed it and couldn't get anything to work. I appreciate your effort to, to make it work. The question will be the middle piece at the end of the day, but I think the design that you're proposing for councils in the future to be hopefully thoughtful when they get through, because there is a lot of concerns about 70th connecting to Indiana, but I think your design will help cater the discussion to be a little more balanced than in the past, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you're trying to be innovative around that open space and activating typically just fields of grass and, and cattails. And so I appreciate you trying to at least activate it. And then I'll look to the city that hopefully we can look for our 10-minute walks to the closest park, because I already saw some improvements elsewhere to help get the 10-minute walking distances property. So for all of that, I am going to be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I'd just like to thank the developer because I think that it is a sorely needed product, the ranch homes for empty nesters and people who want to stay in Arvada to retire. So I appreciate the fact that you're including ranch in this development.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment as well. In reviewing these, this development, you know, I will note a couple things. The, this appears to be a really high-quality development. The underground detention, the lengths that the applicant is willing to go to to produce underground detention, which certainly costs more, but, but yields on a smaller, difficult product, property, a better housing development, a better place for people to live, both now and in the future. And I see that as a real positive. The other thing I'll note is, when we rewrote our comprehensive plan about four or five years ago, this property and properties around here were one of the things that, that there was some contention over in the, the comprehensive plan. And at, at that time, there was lots of sentiment that these properties up front on Indiana should potentially be very dense, high-density or medium-density residential housing, and, and it was one of the issues we grappled with, with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan ultimately has said this should be, you know, low-density, suburban residential development, and, and again, the applicant, I'll congratulate the applicant for bringing forth exactly that type of a product and not a product that really pushes the envelope out towards what very well could have been on the comprehensive plan had things come out differently. I'll also note that the improvements to Indiana and 72nd, to this intersection and the, this development's participation in those improvements is a very important thing, not only for this development, but for everybody in Arvada, particularly anybody on the west side who, who traverses that and will certainly yield better for all of us. So with that, all members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, and with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. And I'll call on Mr. McGough one more time.
Thank you. I move that Ralston Ridge Preliminary Platte, 7120 and 7,000 Indiana Street be approved, subject to the attached special, attached updated condition of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay, all members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Sir, congratulations, good luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
Break down, break down. Let's, let's do the next one, because it'll be real quick. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and look at our next item here quickly, and then we'll take a little stretch and place break. So the next item we have is, is Council Bill 18-013, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Old Town Commons Town Homes. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. The applicant would like to continue this item and present it at the May 7 meeting.
Okay, so with, with the applicant's request to continue this to May 2, if someone would like to make a motion to that effect, and we will vote on it.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protam?
May 7, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I misspoke. May 7. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I move that the public hearing on Old Town Commons, the Old Town Common Townhouses be continued until the meeting of May 7.
Okay, so the motion is to continue till May 7. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. So those hearings are- Mayor Williams absent. So those hearings are continued till May 7. Okay, with that, we're gonna take a quick five-minute stretch and place break. So we'll be back in just a couple of minutes. Okay, so next up, we have the Les Schwab tires at Candela's filing number three preliminary development plan, the northeast corner of Candela's Parkway and 91st Place. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of the council. We have Rita McConnell will introduce this item.
First, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you. This proposal is for 11,878 square foot tire center on 1.38 acres. The request includes two modifications related to parking and an arterial front setback. Staff finds proposal in compliance with the comprehensive plan and land development code. Planning Commission voted six in favor of this request with one absent. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log and they are in order. Carol Eveness, senior planner, and other support staff are in attendance for questions. The applicant, Aaron McLean, is in attendance for presentation.
Okay, so I'll make the posting log and mailing affidavit a permanent part of the record and, sir, invite you up to the podium to make your presentation.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Aaron McLean. The address is 6162 South Willow Drive, Greenwood Village.
Okay, Mr. McLean, I'm sorry, I'm a little out of order here after that little break. I'm gonna swear you in before you get started.
Okay, fair enough.
So do you raise your hand and repeat after me, the testimony you're about to give in this case is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Name and address, then? Please. All right. Aaron McLean with Galloway, address is 6162 South Willow Drive, Greenwood Village, 80111. Yes, we agree with the staff's finding and the staff report that's presented to you. Let's have a short presentation to run through and just kind of kick it back to you for any questions you have. This project is part of the Candela's Commercial Filing Number Three, which is Kings North subdivision, Kings Super's properties to the southeast of this subject property. And this preliminary development plan is part of the final plat that's under review right now with staff. The subject lot is number two within the subdivision. There's a six-lot subdivision that's currently under review. Again, here is how the lots layout within that proposed plat. Les Schwab is again is Lot Two and has internal driveways within the subdivision. No access will be taken onto Candela's Parkway or 91st for that matter. All access drives are within the subdivision. The property does comply with all zoning requirements, beats building coverage and landscaping minimums. We did receive a parking reduction request with the planning commission level. Per code, they're asking for five per 1,000 square feet of retail. Les Schwab doesn't function entirely as a retail facility. They're a small component of it, but primarily they are the servicing and warehousing of tires for installation purposes. And the other aspect of the variance request was for the setback from Candela's Parkway. They require 100 feet from center line. We're asking for a short reduction down to 92 feet, just to help with site circulation and moving the building closer to the west helps with truck movements and site access. Parking reduction process, you know, is detailed more in your staff report. We did, again, request that. We looked at the jurisdictions throughout the area to see what the average stalls were. Typically, they ask for, Les Schwab operations needs about 38 spaces. That's what we found in most jurisdictions. We're proposing 43, which is more, and that's required. We do consider the bays as some parking areas, too. The operation process for Les Schwab is they don't leave any cars out overnight. If they do, for instance, have to have a vehicle stay overnight, they'll bring it into the bay, but no cars are stayed overnight. And again, the setback reduction is just to help with site circulation. It's a very minor reduction, less than 8 percent, and just as for better site circulation. You can kind of see here where, you know, landscaping's set up. The, you know, minimums are met at 25 percent. We did add some more additional landscaping on that northeast corner there to meet some of that code. This is a perspective of the building as you come driving north along Candela's Parkway. So looking at the site when you're going north towards the Beltway, proposed Beltway area, this is what you'd see, how the store would be. And real brief, the PDB does approve, meet all the approval criteria that are found in the land development code, apply with the comp plan, is consistent with other PDPs. You know, it complies with all zoning design standards and, you know, really, you know, will be compatible with adjacent uses as they come online as far as commercial uses go. And really, that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions here. We do have David Maroni here with us. He's a real estate manager, as indicated here, with Les Schwab Tire Center. He can certainly speak to the business operations and the company as a whole if you have any questions specific to that.
Okay, does that complete your presentation?
It does complete my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak for or against this proposal? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and invite council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I do have a question. All storage of tires are inside confined inside the building, right? Nothing outside?
That is correct. All storage of tires will be integrated with the building. There was a component of the property that, you know, originally was gonna have an outdoor tire recycling area. The idea is to move that interior now to the store as, you know, as further development goes on.
It is gonna be inside?
Yes, yes. So they have, you know, the tire recycling, they pick them up once a week on average, but this, their business operations, their model now is to move that tire recycling area to be internal to the store to help with, you know, some of the fire code issues, but also a lot of the safety and theft that can occur with, you know, people wanting to take tires from outdoor enclosures.
Okay, so we just, I would want to make sure that that is for sure. There's no possibility of you not doing it.
Yes, it is for sure. We are-
Should I put that as a requirement on you or are you going to do it?
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, it's, I think I'd be fine to do. We do have our plans for the final development plan to move forward in that direction. But again, that's just-
Okay, because it sounds like your operation, it's not a big deal. I just want to make sure there's no tires outside. That's caused some issues in other parts of the city with storage of tires outside. So I want to-
Correct.
If you don't have any-
Council Mayor, Councilman, and the group.
Just, that's everybody, I think.
Yeah, everybody up there. They at first intended to do that and they would be screening it in their area, but they have also reached out to staff saying they wanted to bring it in, but they didn't have enough time to change it in terms of the PDP going forward. So that could be a condition that we wanted to add there to make sure.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make that a condition because I think there's been scope creep in this little area around tires where all of a sudden folks are one or two tires outside, now there's 15, now there's 40, and your recycle people didn't show up for two weeks or three weeks and now you got hundreds of them outside.
Yeah, and the thing is, they're not, even prior when they were storing them outside per se, it wasn't an eight-foot enclosure. They had a roof on it. It was kind of-
Okay, so it was enclosed?
It wasn't closed. It wasn't just stacked up in the corner of the lot.
Okay.
They had it enclosed with Cinder block material that matched the buildings.
Okay.
But that was-
That's a little bit better.
But now it is actually integrated into the building as-
If you don't mind, I'd like to make that a condition of your approval is that any tires are stored within the facility itself.
For the, yeah, for the ones that are being recycled, correct?
I'm just saying any tires. I'm sure you don't want new ones out there overnight.
Correct. No, they will not do that.
Right? He's laughing.
Yeah, he's-
If there's not any questions, I'll make the motion.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, you may proceed, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I move that Les Schwab tires at Candela's Commercial Filing Three Preliminary Development Plan, northeast corner of Candela's Parkway at West 91st Place. Do I do the condition after I say the approval?
Yes, I would-
Okay.
Yeah, I would just go ahead and do it that way.
At the condition first? With the condition that all tires will be stored within the physical facility itself, not outside, be subject to the attached updated conditions of approval and what I just added. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is for approval with the additional condition that all tires, new or old, be stored inside the facility. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams excused. So that passes. Sir, good luck with your project. So next, I'll open the public hearing on Candela's Point at Candela's Commercial Filing Number Two Preliminary Development Plan, northeast corner of Highway 72 and Candela's Parkway. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. Again, Rita McConnell will introduce this item.
Thank you. The proposal is for a three-lot commercial center that includes three buildings ranging in size from 5,600 square feet to 11,600. The allowed uses include a mix of restaurant, retail, personal service, and office uses. The request includes modifications related to various setbacks, landscaping, and the distance separation of a food truck to a restaurant. Staff finds a proposal in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. Planning Commission voted six in favor of this request with one absent. I have received the affidavit of mailing and posting log and they are in order. Jeremiah Vibo, Planner One, and other support staff are in attendance for staff questions. The applicant Jessica Greenow is in attendance.
Thank you. So I'll make the posting log and mailing affidavit a permanent part of the record and ask anybody who plans to testify on this proposal, please raise your hand so I can swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in this case is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, Ms. Greenow, come on up and make your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members. Do you need my address? It's 6162 South Willow Drive, Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. We'll just walk you through a brief presentation on our proposed development and our requested variances. So you can see on your screens here the relative position of our proposed development in relation to the overall Candela's area. We're in the proposed Candela's Point area, which was recently approved at Planning Commission and City Council for preliminary plat and is currently in review administratively with city staff for final plat. Our development is Lots Two, Three, and Four located in the southwest corner of the Candela's Point development at the northeast corner of State Highway 72 and Candela's Parkway. This is our proposed development. We are proposing two multi-tenant retail commercial buildings on the site with an additional allowance for Lot Two to be covered under this PDP. That lot will be over lot graded and seeded at this time so that a developer can come in in the future when that lot is purchased and move smoothly into the FDP process. We have three proposed ride-in, ride-out access points to the development, one from State Highway 72, one from the proposed Road Two, and one from Candela's Parkway. We also have three full motion accesses, two from a proposed private access drive running east-west on the north side of the lots, and one from the proposed Road Two. We are requesting several variances on this project, the first of which is the setback requirement for trash enclosures. There is a requirement for a 20-foot setback from a roadway. We feel that placing these trash enclosures right on the private access drive at the rear of the building does better, facilitates the site better aesthetically so that they are not located in the front parking area and visible from Candela's Parkway or State Highway 72. We're also requesting several setback variances. The 100-foot setback requirement from the center line of Candela's Parkway, we are requesting to reduce that to 80 feet for Lot Two, just to increase the buildability of that lot so that a more medium-sized retailer can come in on that lot in the future. We're also requesting landscape and parking setbacks on Lot Two on the west side along Candela's Parkway and on the east side of Lot Four along Road Two. Due to the curvature of these roads, we feel that reducing those setbacks and increasing landscaping helps us to facilitate the plaza area and pedestrian and bike circulation on the site that we are trying to achieve. We are also requesting a variance to the code requirement for a 200-foot setback- We are also requesting a variance to the code requirement for a 200-foot setback for food trucks. The food truck is a really nice accessory structure for one of our tenants, which is a brewery, taproom use, and we feel that we meet the intent of the code because any future restaurant users will not be impeded at an existing brick-and-mortar location with a food truck coming in and competing. They'll know upfront that a food truck will be parked there periodically. The overall intent of this development is to provide a really good commercial retail facility for the neighboring residences. We've incorporated a lot of public spaces, plaza areas, and business patio areas, as well as a lot of pedestrian connectivity. We've got a 10-foot meandering trail along State Highway 72, which will eventually extend along the entire highway as that corridor is developed. We're also installing sidewalks along Candela's Parkway and Road Two, and we are facilitating connectivity from each of those sidewalks into our retail area for both bikes and pedestrians. All of those sidewalks are ADA accessible as well. We're also providing screen walls at the rear of the building to screen electrical and meter equipments and just add some material and horizontal articulation to the building for visual interest. You can see here our proposed elevations for the west building. We have incorporated 27 percent transparency in the building, which is, which exceeds the required, the code requirement. We've also used varying cohesive building materials in varying textures and colors for visual interest and have incorporated 360-degree architecture to prevent large plain facades. The screen wall is located at the rear of the building there. Our east building is similar in materials with 25 percent transparency and all the same building materials and intent of architectural design. We feel that we comply with all adopted code approval criteria, as you can see here, and we can run through this in more detail if you have questions on it. But with that, I will open it up to you guys for questions.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public here who'd like to make comment either for or against this proposal? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of this hearing and invite questions or action from the city council. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I always have questions. Let's see, so first, I didn't see anything about parking, so I'm assuming parking is fine, right?
Yeah, they're actually exceeding their parking requirement.
How much are they exceeding it by? So they're required to have 129 based on a parking ratio of five per thousand. Yeah. However, they've provided 8.5 per thousand. That's largely due to just the, largely not knowing many of these final end users and really leaving it open for the ability to- How many total parking spots is that? Instead of- Sorry, 219 total. So 219 they're required was 129? 129. Okay, perfect. Well, that kind of, I just want to make sure with the food truck taking some spots that we're good still. So the food truck, this may be for staff because this is the first time I've seen, and there's been a lot of healthy debate around food trucks, around brick-and-mortars. Is the food truck variance, will that be associated to the property, I'm assuming, right? This will be just for this development. Okay. And will, you know, kind of like they said, the intent was to protect existing brick-and-mortar establishments. This is the first commercial development in the area. The only other, you know, property or potential restaurant site within 200 feet will be in this development and will ask to see their private covenants upfront. Yeah, I think the question more is, is it associated to the customer or the property? But I'm assuming it's going to be the property so that if this customer leaves, they can still have the right to have food trucks there, right?
Yes.
That's what your intent is?
That is the intent.
That's correct. And it's okay. The only other question I have is, would you, are you going to have any potential restaurant that does go in there and kind of just sign a disclosure that they fully understand that there's a food truck right around the corner?
In, in the event that we do have a restaurant, which we are hoping to have some form of fast casual or sit-down restaurant here, they, it will be in two places. It will be in the, the covenants and agreement between our developer-
Okay.
And, and the tenant, and it will also be in the overall maintenance and operations agreement on the site as well. So it will be presented to them upfront in, in multiple places.
Okay, so it's documented, so they can't come back and say, "We didn't know."
Yes.
That's the whole purpose of the question. So if there's not any questions, I'll make the motion.
Don't see any other questions from the city council. You may proceed.
All right. I move that Candela's Point at Candela's Commercial filing two preliminary development plan northeast corner, Highway 72, or excuse me, Highway 72 and Candela's Parkway be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the planning commission.
So the motion is for approval. All members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Williams absent. Good luck on your project. Thank you for coming down. Okay, so next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18-015, An Ordnance Authorizing an Additional Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2018. This is ordinance number 4633. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Director of Finance, Brian Archer, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Archer.
Good evening. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Like to talk to you tonight a little bit about our first budget amendment. Hopefully, nothing on this will look or come to you as a surprise. Quickly, we'll review our budget cycle. Each year, we come to City Council in October, ask permission to approve the budget for the next fiscal year. Once that is completed, we then come to City Council with what we would call carryover items. That is what we're looking at tonight. These are items that have not been completed but were on the budget in 2017. Many of them are project-based, that take longer than one year to complete, or items that we may have run into, issues along the way. The second thing that we're going to talk about tonight are one-time items. These are items that were presented to City Council during our 2008 budget process, but we did not have an identified funding source for. We do now and have closed out the books for 2017 and feel very comfortable that we can fund these priorities. And finally, there's some new items that have come up throughout the beginning of this year, or items that were after our 2017 budget process that we would like to present to City Council tonight for approval. As you can see, the carryover request is a little over $20 million, almost $21 million, broken out through various funds. If we want to concentrate specifically on the general fund, that is approximately 1.8 million. The street maintenance fund, 2.4, and as you move down the page, you will see some larger numbers in our enterprise funds. We will talk specifically about what makes those up. In the general funds, you will see three main items. Carryover related to JPPHA, a carryover related to our security project and implementing our security assessment that was completed just a couple of years ago. And then a couple of projects, specifically the Land Development Code rewrite, which is a multi-year project. A mental health contract related to our PD department, and this is not for our officers, this is to support cases that they may run into. And then some outside legal counsel. Overall, those items add up to approximately 1.8 million dollars. As you can see with the other funds, it's predominantly made up of capital items. These are large items that take multiple years. You may ask, why are we bringing these to you in that when we have a capital projects fund where we approve projects one time and that carries over many years? In our enterprise funds, we are required to reappropriate each and every year anything that's capital-related. You can see a list of those. I'd just like to point out a couple of them. We have a carryover related to the Westwood Golf Course Clubhouse, which is now open, an item related to the irrigation, which is now on, and some very large water and sewer projects that are in process. You'll also notice a $2.4 million related to street maintenance. This is all of the remaining dollars that were left over in our new street maintenance fund. If council does remember, in 2017, we had set aside $1 million in '17 and $2 million in '18 out of our one-time funds. What we had done is we had appropriated all those funds in '17 in hopes that we could get many of those dollars spent. We did get all but the $2 million remaining that was always meant to be spent in '18. The additional $400,000 is reimbursements from our 50/50 program and our concrete replacement program. And so each year, we reappropriate those so that they can be spent on new roads. If we take a look at the one-time items, they amount to approximately $11.8 million. Some of these are repeats, i.e. they've been proposed and transferred from the general fund over into these various funds and then needing to be re-appropriated. If we concentrate on the general fund, you will see this is made up of some very large items, mostly capital-related, the final piece of the funding to the Delta Station, adding additional funds to our risk related to some of the losses that we have experienced in '16 and '17. The last few items related to our fiber, easy to say, fiber conduit build-out, some additional funding related to the Old Town Hub, some money set aside so that we can meet our ADA compliance, additional funding related to the Arvada Center. This was all part of their five-year plan and is related to year two of their fiscal year, and then some operating dollars. On the all-other-fund side, you will see the Delta Station getting re-appropriated, some dollars for the ADA study, which you see up above, being re-appropriated in the capital fund, some additional dollars being added to street maintenance. If City Council so chooses to approve these tonight, this will bring our street maintenance total to over $12 million, the budget for 2018, and finally, some small operating dollars. If we look at the new requests, I'd like to speak directly to each one of these. What you will see on the tax increment side is budget for two items, well, technically three items. A repair is needed at the Lake Arbor Station. This is due to some water retention issues. We're seeing that the water table over there has risen currently, and we'd like to get that taken care of. These can be paid for directly out of the tax increment funds. We're also looking to purchase some record storage related to our police department. Our records are growing incrementally year over year. We have the opportunity to do that. And finally, we heard earlier from the Center for Mental Health, there is some dollars in here for support of the alcohol and drug rehab program. On the capital improvement side, each year, we take in money related to park tap fees, park development fees, and a program called the Three Cents Per Thousand. This relates to parks and allows them to upgrade their irrigation each year. The $1.1 million is asking to appropriate each one of those funds for expenditure. Finally, the large purchase in vehicles, $1.8 million, is related to our faster system. Each one of these vehicles, the budget already exists, but the replacement has come sooner than expected. And so we're asking City Council the ability to order those vehicles and get them online. Many of these are large vehicles, can take up to a year to get in place. The budget, the, the ordering cycle runs from February to May, and we'd like to try to take advantage of that. Finally, this is how we are proposing to pay for the one-time items that we're requesting tonight. On the revenue side, this is how we generated approximately $9.6 million in revenue above our budget. As we presented City Council the year-end report just two weeks ago, you may remember that our sales tax came in at 5.6 percent above the prior year. Our budget was four. That 1.6 percent is what amounts to the approximately 1.1 million. Our auto-use tax, and then our building revenues, which we've talked plenty about. City Council does remember our single-family attached, or excuse me, detached homes were down, but we did have an exorbitant amount of roofs related to our May hailstorm. All that adds up, again, to repeat, 9.6 million. We talked before about our expenditures, where we had $2 million savings. We're asking tonight to carry over 1.8 million of that, leaving approximately $250,000. Overall savings, 9.8. Use, 6.9, which leaves us approximately 2.9 million that we would like to put back into the fund balance for further discussions.
Okay, Mr. Archer, does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the floor for council questions, and I'll start with Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Archer, thank you so much. I appreciate our budget talks very much. I just have a quick question. It might be a naive question, and I apologize for that.
No, it's okay.
So you mentioned on the very first slide that you want to carry over for security a project that was, a project that was completed. Can you explain that to me, why that works that way?
Um, if I said that, I do apologize.
Why would we carry over a fund that, carry over the $846,000 for a project?
Yeah, so I probably misspoke on that. I apologize. What we did is we completed a security audit, and that identified various projects that we needed to implement to make that audit happen.
Gotcha.
And so many of the actual hard implementation items haven't been completed.
Okay, great. I was confused. I'm sorry.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, it's a little bit with the budget because I think there's savings in the long run. What's our policy around, you know, alternative fuel vehicles or, or anything? Do we have a policy around finding more efficient vehicles to reduce our operating expense on them, like fuel?
There's also a city council result related to various alternate-
We didn't talk about that lately, have we?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
What was it, then?
So what we look at each year is to see how our fuel usage is compared to prior years and what each vehicle is using, and then come up with whether our savings are for that year or ongoing. Is that what you're asking?
Well, that, and are we looking for vehicles that may not? Because technology is now getting so far advanced that now you're hitting vehicles that do 500 miles on electric charge. So, I mean, are we looking at, because our fuel consumption and costs around that's high, and since you brought up we're buying vehicles, and every year I see that pop up, I thought, we, I want to understand, what is our policy that maybe something like 5% of our fleet needs to use alternative fuels or?
Councilmember Pfeiffer, we do have a performance measure around that, but off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I'd be happy to maybe get that information back to council at the end of the week.
Yeah, could you? I just can't remember what, how it was worded, but I'd also like to just, when we buy new vehicles, are we, are we looking for operating savings? Because, you know, we, we put fuel in our fueling stations, and that costs a lot of money. And so if there's any way to reduce that ongoing operating expense by finding a different vehicle to improve, I just, we keep, I see, I see millions of dollars every year come for vehicles, so I just thought we should ask the question now. I don't know, seven years later, maybe I should ask the question, but hopefully, if you can get that to me and then we can discuss that down the road. Also, I remember in one of your memos about the, like, small cell, smart city lighting. The Old Town lighting you listed in there, and I want to make sure when we do projects like that, that we're doing it future, you know, kind of not future-proofing, but future-focused a little bit? No, no one's here from that team, is there? Oh, Bob. Bob gave you the heads up that it's him. You know, what are we, when we're spending money on this, are we future-focused on that? Because those lights we own, this is a great opportunity to buy right now to give us some future activity or fun toys.
So in Old Town, we've gone through and replaced a lot of the lights along Webster and Grandview, but with certainly something we need to look at is more the smart lighting.
Right.
Yeah. Because when we started that program, that was three or four years ago, I believe, so we're trying, you know, we need to catch back up and look at the smart lighting and implement it with the new lights, because we still have several streets in Old Town that we want to relight, light better.
Yeah, because it, what draws that attention a little bit is that we, we approved some street lighting, like pedestrian lighting, for the Old Town Residence Building that does not quite align with, with Old Town. Not that it needs to, but those are very, very modern, and we have very old-fashioned, and I was just trying to figure out what our plan was, if we're going to buy these lights. So are these net-new lights, or are these just replacing lights, or?
A little bit of both, Mr. Pfeiffer. So we're replacing some of the lights that were outdated, and then we're adding lights where there were areas that were underlit.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of both.
Yeah, I just sometimes hate putting money when we might replace it, so. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Ms. Ford?
So Brian, you may have mentioned this, but when we do have an increase, an unexpected or unanticipated increase in sales tax, do we have a policy on how we spend that money? Do we save a portion of it? Do we?
Yeah, it's a great question. We don't have a specific- We don't have a specific policy on how those dollars need to be allocated. What we do is try to bring that information to city council and bring ideas on how that can be spent. We've talked around possibilities of earmarking additional sales tax for this or that project, but today, we do not have anything like that. So as an example, we're bringing this forward to you tonight to try to spend it on certain projects, and as we move throughout the year and as we give you your quarterly updates, we'll continue to try to identify these funds and give the city council the opportunity where they would like to put them.
So, so my question is, because obviously, in years that are good, we may want to think about saving for those times when the sales tax isn't as high. So is there anything currently in the way we budget that we would, you know, how do I want to say that, that we would compensate for that now, or is that something that we really do or should start to be thinking about?
That's a wonderful question and kind of the basis of our tenure modeling and why we look at tenure financial planning and why city council established a 17 percent reserve. Certainly, we're open to additional conversations around that and trying to understand where we might have a pullback from sales tax, what kind of assumptions we may use. We do not have a specific reserve for a bad year, but we certainly do have our 17 percent reserve that is established for anything that may come upon that.
If I, if I may, I think I can answer this question. I think we actually do have a policy, which is council policy 3.14, which is the policy that establishes the reserve funds for all of our, all of our funds, which builds in the requirement, in the case of the general fund, for 17 percent reserve above the, above the fund balance. That policy, and 25 percent for our enterprise funds and so forth, that, that policy allows us to anticipate any fluctuations that we may need to address through our tenure plan. The other thing that that policy requires is that all of our tenure plans are fully balanced throughout the tenure planning period, which includes the minimum reserve balances. So I think we do account for the fluctuations in the economy while at the same time making sure that we make the funds available to be spent in accordance with the council's direction for public services and the public good. So I believe we do have a policy that addresses council member Ford's questions.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, seeing none, the mayor will invite a motion. Mr. Pfeiffer.
So you said those being like workshops. I move that Council Bill 18-015, an ordinance authorizing, right, am I on the right one? Yeah. An ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2018 be approved on final reading number 4633 and ordered published by title only.
Okay, all members have voted. There are five yeses and zero nos, with council member Jones and Mayor Williams absent. That clears. Next up, we have a public comment. This is for anybody who'd like to make a comment, and I'll start with Ms. Nancy Young. You had indicated you wanted to speak on the item that was continued till May 7th. Would you like to make a public comment this time?
No, thank you.
Save it, okay. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment period and go to reports from city council. Any reports from city council? Mr. Pfeiffer.
Well, because Bob wasn't here last time. I think you're getting an award. I'm going to keep bringing it up until you're actually in front of us, but the Dr. Cog Award next, next week. So I just want to congratulate you for all your support of Dr. Cogs. I haven't seen you since I brought it up last time, and thank you for all your service to the region as well as representing Arvada. So we will be all applauding you, what is that, the 25th of April? Congratulations.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mayor Protem and members of the council, next Monday, our workshop will present the Arts and Culture Master Plan, the Community Visioning Project, and the review of the city council's strategic plan in preparation for the presentation for action of the strategic plan on May the 7th.
Okay. Mr. Pfeiffer, you've got a question?
Yeah, I do, actually. Well, we're looking at schedule. I'm trying to get a little bit better at watching because I know I have some conflicts coming up for the summer. Does any of, anything, anything slipping right now that would push back the June 11th Youth Engagement, Public Safety, Health of the City presentations? I just want to make sure, whatever you're planning, if there's any slipping on that one, I, I'm very focused on those two subjects, and that week's a tough week. I may be out of town later in that week, so I need to just make sure we, if there's any slipping on those two, I'd like to...
There is not at this time. Are you saying you're going to be out of town for the June 11th?
I might be out of town that time, so if you can just highlight those two...
Okay.
On June 11th, like, you and I can work offline, but I think there was some talk that we might have, you know, some additional things to work on next week that may impact. Does that go away?
No. As a matter of fact, I think part of our discussion right now is a result of last week's workshop is on trying to get all of you information regarding capital projects sooner. And, and we're looking at some dates in either Light Bay or early June, and we might be looking on a Saturday as an example for, for that, but I'll, we'll be looking at the schedule tomorrow, so I'll let you know if there's any changes.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything for us, Mr. Daley? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.